Good.
All right, looks like we got everybody gathered. I apologize for not being able to be there with you in person this evening. But I think for the most part, we're just going to be receiving information and providing some feedback at the end. So I'm I'm sure we can all conduct ourselves fine in my absence here. With that, Jeff, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmate, present, Council Smallwood.
Oh, she's she's excused. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Council Sheldon here, Council Walker.
Here.
Council Exner.
Here.
Council Hokinson.
Here.
Mayor Pulliam.
Here. Please note that Tyler Council did inform me, Tyler Deems informed me this morning that he has decided to go ahead and put his name in the in the ring here to be our next city manager. So with that in mind, I've asked Jeff Apparati to kind of, and I think I always real realize your name, Jeff, I apologize. But I've asked Jeff to kind of staff the meeting for us this evening. So Jeff, will you go ahead and take us through the presentations?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Council, I'm pleased to introduce Eric Jensen, who is the Principal of Jensen Strategies LLC. The city retains Jensen Strategies to manage our recruitment process for the search for our new city manager. Jensen Strategies has conducted a very thorough process so far. They've already offered a public input opportunity for the community back on June 1st. They've sent an input survey to all city staff and they've conducted one-on-one stakeholder interviews with all the councilors and all the department heads. All of these efforts have been centered around the question of what are the attributes you're looking to see in Sandy's next city manager? Well, the result of that work is before you tonight, you have the draft position profile, which includes hiring standards and criteria as well as policy directives for the new city manager. It also includes hiring procedures and a schedule. And so the purpose of tonight's work session is to allow the the council an opportunity to discuss these documents, make changes or suggest changes if you deem them necessary. But per state law, formal adoption of these documents is required at a regular meeting with a public comment opportunity if the council wishes to conduct the actual finalist interviews and deliberations in executive session, which we recommend at the end of this process. So to do those things in executive session, you have to go through these steps here at the beginning with public comment opportunity. So unless there are any questions about any of that, I'm happy to throw it over to Eric Jensen.
Hey, thank you, Jeff. I don't know how close I have to get to the microphone.
You're fine.
Okay.
You're good.
Okay, good. Some places I go to, they practically make you swallow the microphone. So I always ask. Thank you, Jeff, and thank you, Mayor and Council. Great to be here today. Jeff, that was probably one of the best intros that we've had in one of these sessions. So thanks very much. You covered a lot of bases I was going to cover. So so first of all, thank you for giving us the opportunity to conduct this recruitment. We appreciate the opportunity. We're honored that you've entrusted us with that. And also thank you for the time that you've put into this in advance and doing the individual interviews, which has given a lot of fodder for what we produced for you today. So as Jeff said, the purpose of this work session is to review these documents that we have drafted for you and to get any feedback that you might have prior to adopting adopting the documents on June 20th. The we also at the end want to talk a little bit about the salary recommendations. We've done some comparables and looked at those and we have a recommendation for you with regard to the range that you might want to advertise for, and we'll get to that at the end. So as Jeff mentioned, there were a number of things that went into the to the information that created this document. And of course, the interviews, there were 18 interviews, seven, of course, with all of you, and then 11 with staff. So in addition to that, we had a staff survey, as Jeff mentioned, we had 17 responses in the staff survey. We did a community survey as well online. We had three responses there. And we did give the opportunity for community comment online at a facilitated session, but unfortunately, no one came to that. So the few points about the profile. This document, the profile, which is referred to as Appendix A in your packet, is an important document for a number of reasons. So as Jeff mentioned, you do need to adopt a profile in order for you to be able to hold executive session on this recruitment going forward. But even more so, we also use this document to set the criteria by which we evaluate candidates all the way through the process. So we use it to establish the criteria for the applications. We use it for the criteria for all of the all of the interviews that are done all the way through the process because we want to stick to what you want in the next city manager. You'll note that with regard to if you've read through the document, which I'm sure you have, you'll note that maybe some of the points that you brought up with us aren't in there. And when we're doing these interviews, we're looking for a nexus, a nexus of opinion so that we can find out where is the commonality in what people are looking for. And then we try to thread that needle as closely as we can. We also I also want to make mention that as you read through that profile, I've had other councils say when they've looked at the profile, well, it's it looks like we're looking for a unicorn. And and to a certain degree, you are. And you're not unique in that regard. But what we want in that profile is what does your ideal candidate look look like? Or what is your ideal candidate's attributes have? Or candidate has attributes that candidates have? Yeah. And how many of those boxes can we check off? So we're going to, we're looking for the person that we can check the most boxes off as as humanly possible. All right. Before I go start going through the documents, any initial questions? Okay, I'll dive right into it. So you have in your packet after the staff report, you have the overview sheet, the adoption of official position documents, and that's just explaining why you're going through this process of adopting these two documents. Then following that, you have Appendix A and let me kind of walk through what we have here. And by the way, the other thing I meant to mention is that we use the profile to generate the recruitment brochure. So all the material, the attributes that you're looking for will go into the brochure along with other information about the community and so forth. So so when it came to minimum education and experience, we're suggesting that you require a bachelor's degree in public administration planning, political science-related field, and at least three years of upper-level government management experience. And of course, we always have the language of equivalent combination of education experience may be considered. Sometimes you do get that one candidate that has other ways of fulfilling those requirements. We also suggest that you put down preferred education and experience as well. And when we get to doing criteria, this will translate to more points for candidates if they meet some of these preferred criteria. And that includes an advanced degree in public administration, such as an MPA, and five or more years of increasingly responsible public sector experience. Previous service as a city manager and or training in economic development and growth management is highly desired. And experience working in Oregon is also beneficial, given the unique the unique elements that make up Oregon, Oregon law. So then we get into the
Do you break in anytime or?
Sure. What I would suggest is if you have clarification questions, break in and then but otherwise, at the end, I'll come back and ask for comments if that's all right, counselor.
Means I have to have a memory, so. I might fall asleep, though.
But I did also, you might found on your desk, there is a little swag. And so you do have something to write with. You need it.
I wrote my own.
Okay. All right. All right. So let me just go through these attributes. And the first two attributes we have in every single recruitment that we do for city managers because these two, the leadership and management category and the council relations are core to the work of a city manager. Now, these, the elements that are in these descriptions are consistent. We make sure that they're consistent with what you told us. But we offer up that this, these two attributes are paramount to any candidate that you're looking for, that you're looking for somebody who has the ability to oversee multiple departments, oversee multiple disciplines that can help generate an organization vision and a leadership style that is accessible and and promotes communication and professionalism. And has experience in leading strategic workforce planning to meet current and future staff capacity needs. Council relations, again, paramount. This person is directly accountable to you. And so the ability for that person to maintain good relations with the council is important to be proactive in that relationship and professional, fair, and inclusive. To always be aware of city operations and the legal obligations of the city so that they can inform you of what of what's going on and what you may need to be talking about when it comes to legal obligations and regulatory compliance. And also is get, excuse me, gives you the ability to make informed decisions. It gets you the information that you need to make informed policy decisions as the city's chief policymaking body. Communication came up a lot in our interviews. Looking for someone with strong communication skills, both for internal audiences and for external audiences. And to that, and being able to to communicate with diverse groups of people. And within that communication, have emotional competency, transparency, humility, inclusion, ethics, and accessibility. And also being able to promote two-way dialogue. And then finally, this is when we talk about communication, we're talking both verbal and written in this particular case. Actually, most cases. The next attribute, not surprisingly, I don't think, is wastewater and water infrastructure experience. You're looking for somebody who can facilitate large and complex capital projects, particularly for wastewater, stormwater, and water. I think it goes without saying that is a paramount issue here in Sandy with all of the infrastructure needs that you have and the projects that you have planned and you're working on. But you're also looking for somebody who can lead the multifaceted portions of that because it's not just a matter of do you know how how to make sure that a capital infrastructure project is moving forward? But do you understand how to orchestrate being able to work with the regulatory agencies, being able to work with your jurisdictional partners or community partners and so forth, and stay within the federal and state regulations? And also very important is the financing part of this. And being able to be creative and effective in their financing approaches is going to be important, as I'm sure you all know. Community and economic development, it's the next category that came up. And looking at being able to move forward with economic development and being able to seize those economic opportunities when they come to you and to proactively be able to look for those economic opportunities as they come up. But it also takes a a certain degree of ability to think strategically about how do you set up policy and operations so that you're ready to take those economic opportunities when they come up? And so we have put that in there. And then at the last sentence there, knowledge of Oregon land use law and urban renewal management is beneficial. This is, those are two things that are are unique to Oregon. And so we have included that. The next item is public finance. Obviously, you want somebody with with that's proficient in public finance skills. That's going to be responsible and strategic in fiscal management. That's going to integrate your finances with with your city goals and included diversity of revenue approaches. Somebody who's going to be fiscally prudent with your taxpayer dollars. And someone who is going to be looking at this from with a lens of developing and maintaining sustainable financial approaches so that you have sustainable revenues moving forward. And again, back to Oregon. Experience with Oregon budget law and requirements is going to be helpful. Next item is facilities. When I'm talking about facilities here, I'm talking about both in terms of employee workspace and in terms of facilities for community use. And so we heard that you would like to have somebody who understands facility planning and management and being able to integrate workforce-based needs with the future with future facilities planning and being able to strategically plan for the community's needs in facilities, be they recreational resources or meeting spaces or any of the public-facing administrative areas that you might have. The next item is transportation transit. And here we're talking about streets, but we're also talking about your transit system and being able to effectively plan and maintain and construct streets as and being able to move forward in managing the transit system, making sure that that's continuing forward. So you're looking for somebody who has experience developing traffic management approaches to support livability while facilitating the high volume of visitors that you have going through Sandy on a regular basis. Community engagement also very much on the on the radar. And what we heard was that you're looking for somebody who can maintain and enhance cities' efforts to inform and engage the Sandy community in city business. Within that, you're looking for somebody who's going to, in doing that, be even-handed with the community and is going to look for two-way dialogues leading toward consensus building when possible. And exuding the values of transparency, inclusion, collaboration, and as I mentioned, two-way communication and community engagement. Intergovernmental relations, there's a lot going on here that requires intergovernmental, intergovernmental relations as we were hearing from you. And that's everything from just the the day-to-day relationships that you might have with, say, the school district or the fire district or the county and the state and your regulatory agencies, but also with these key projects that you have going on right now, particularly in the wastewater and the water supply realm. And then, of course, with streets, you you do have crossover there as well. So being able to manage those intergovernmental relations is going to be key. Housing policy and homelessness. We heard a lot about that you want someone who understands housing supply, housing development that you may be in a point now where you're in a moratorium, but it is anticipated that you're going to continue to grow as you have. And so being able to think and plan for strategically how you're going to go about developing that housing supply is going to be key. And how do you interface the public infrastructure to support those housing needs? And then also with regard to homelessness, making sure that that you have the policies, codes, and resources to help address homelessness issues as they come forward. Then broadband. You are in a relatively unique situation compared to most cities with transit and also with broadband. And
Proud of it.
And proud of it. Absolutely. And we heard that, too. So so somebody who's familiar with municipal broadband system operations would be desirable if at all possible. You, we, I will say that that's going to be, that's going to be part of the unicorn.
Yeah.
So an appreciation for Sandy and what Sandy is, where Sandy's been, where Sandy's going, and what the culture of Sandy is. And then we always have in here the understanding of city government roles. Do they understand what their role is, what the role of the city council is, what the role of staff is? And how to how to navigate legally defined roles as they're doing their job. Now, I'm going to go through the policy directives and then we'll circle back to the attributes and then to the policy directives. Now, the policy directors are called for in Oregon law. If you want to hold executive session, that's part of the profile. And that's why we put these in in here. But it's also helpful for the candidates to understand what are the big issues that you have going on that they're going to need to be need to grapple with? So not surprisingly, number one is wastewater infrastructure expansion. That we've heard that, and I think every single interview. And we have a description here that kind of takes it through where you've come from on this. And the moratorium, the consent decree, and raising the fact that there have been concerns about utility, community concerns about utility rates. So the next city manager is going to need to be able to move forward with those wastewater improvements. They're going to be need to work closely with your public works department to address the unfunded mandates that are part of that. And to meet the terms of the consent decree and accommodate growth in a manner that's financially sustainable for the city and for the ratepayers. The second issue we heard about drinking water reinvestment. And this goes back to the drinking water system reinvestment project. And I'm not going to go through the particulars, because you know that, but just to cut to the chase here at the end, where we always add what the role of the next city manager is going to be in these issues. And the city manager is going to need to work closely with public works to ensure that this project moves forward efficiently and in a manner that is financially sustainable to city and ratepayers. Second, I'm sorry, third issue that we heard about was the community campus project. And we learned that that was, that is a key project in your downtown area to develop a new park in the heart of downtown. And that you're you're currently gathering community input on that to come up with a development plan. So the next city manager is going to need to take the baton on that and to help run forward with it. So they're going to need to be able to be the champion of that. And to to be able to help with the funding, the community engagement that comes along with that and the partnerships that will be needed to move that project forward. Police chief recruitment. It's evident that your police chief has decided to retire. And so you will be looking for another police chief, and the next city manager is going to need to be involved in selecting that person moving forward in a way that's transparent and fair in the selection process for the next police chief. And then lastly, workforce capacity and space needs assessment. We heard a lot about space needs for employees. And we heard a lot about the limitations and at the same time, hearing that you run a very lean, very lean workforce. And to that end, the next city manager is going to need to come in and assess that situation and assess what is needed in terms of space. At the same time, that the new city manager is looking at staffing requirements. And so being able to integrate those two concepts together and the and the plan moving forward is going to be is going to be paramount. So that gets us to the end of the profile, and I'm going to go back and ask you. Let's just take this section by section. Do you have any comments about the minimum education experience?
Question now.
Okay.
I gotta find it. It was more about a certification than it was a fair order is. CR to have a CPM. You didn't have that in there for certified public managers. Were those, do they have to have just the bachelors in public administration? Or could we add a CPM for preferred? I know you had masters, you're a public admin, but I didn't know about certification for.
You could, you could add that. I would recommend that it go in the preferred section because it will severely limit your candidates if you put it in the minimum.
I didn't think it should go in the minimum. I just thought it as a preferred, as a preferred benchmark. Because some people might read, at least from a clarity standpoint, and I want to make sure that the applications, you know, meeting all the requirements. Somebody might look at that and say, okay, I have a bachelor's, but I don't have a master's. And sometimes they they do have a certificate that they've taken that could be beneficial to their, you know, to their scoring.
Sure.
Can you, I'm not familiar with that certification. So can you make the case for why that's? Good. I mean, there's a lot of secrets in my industry that are. Yeah, and I guess from my standpoint, just in my experience, there's somebody that has gone out and taken the time and the energy and effort to put forth the work effort into getting specific certifications for their skill set, sure, always enhances their.
Do you have any history or experience with this specific certification?
No, I can't say.
What's it called?
It's a certified public manager.
Eric, isn't the, isn't, doesn't ICMA have a certified manager? That's the one that I've seen before.
Yeah, I thank you, Jeff.
Public servant, public servants in city state government.
Yeah, so ICMA, the International City County Managers Association. Yeah. So ICMA, the International City County Managers Association does have a certification program for managers. And that list of people on that are, it's an elite group, if you will. I would recommend that if you wanted to put some certification down, that, that would be the one that you've put down as preferred. Specifically.
So after masters of public administration comma or CPM certification, et cetera.
Again, I'm not to the council, I'm not, I'm not saying we should put it on a required.
I'm looking at it says. Completed the required 300 hours of study through a CPM program accredited. So it's not just like a weekend course.
I have to defer to somebody who knows more about it than me, which I know nothing. So this is, when you say it's an elite group. Usually elite is a good thing.
It is in this case. Yeah.
Okay. So.
So we'll include the ICMA certification as one of the preferreds. So.
Okay. I was going to bring this up under experience and stuff, but since you're already here, I'll jump in. First off. In, in my mind, we are not looking for beginner. I've been through three city managers and I gotta say that somebody who's had that experience before really made a difference in what happened here. So would you say that Sandy would be best suited for a highly experienced city manager, somebody that really has to have in my mind, they do need it because of all the issues that are going on here. But I don't want to overqualify the suggestion about having a pink unicorn. No animal in this world that will fit all these things, but
Sure.
I, I also don't want to make the circle so small that we just don't get anybody. I do want to get a nice round. Look at several candidates. So are where do you perceive Sandy should be at? Should we be talking about? You know, my perception of a highly qualified, or you think this is Sandy is more of a you're a smaller city. They don't attack me. But I do think that we have a lot of big issues for our city or size.
Yes, and you do. And I, I would recommend or think that it would be beneficial for you to have someone with city management experience. Or at least someone who has been in the C suite. Someone who's, who's been interacting with councils, somebody who understands what it is to plan citywide. And to go across multiple disciplines in the public sector. So we do have in the preferred, a statement in there about city, city managers, city manager experience, which means we're going to give extra points if somebody has that experience.
Services as a city manager, as well as experience and or training and economic development and growth management is highly desired. Experience working in Oregon's beneficial.
Yeah, I was thinking of counselor requirement of a bachelor's degree for these areas as a minimum, but, but I know you have it in Oregon though.
Or related field.
Yeah, it looked to me like that was, the degree was equal to or as important as the experience. So you have either one.
I interpreted that as the degree would be preferable in these areas, but it could be an alternative degree. So if we had a biology BS who happened to have 10 years as a city manager, we would look at it because he would have met the minimum.
That's why I took that as well. And that's kind of the place that I'm saying I'm, I'm conflict with.
You want to require previous city management experience as a minimum. Is that what you're saying?
I was looking at the degree. I don't need a doctorate, but let's just be people. The difference between Jordan leaving who had the degree, then some of the other city managers that were pulled in because they happened to have understanding of city was in my mind, a significant advantage. Having a degree and experience was really key for what Jordan's.
But isn't that, isn't that there though? Because it's, it's listed as it's listed as preferred, not required. I mean, so really doesn't the question come down to? Do you want to limit our pool of candidates that we get to interview and have in front of us? By making that a requirement, or would you rather have a more diverse pool that we can have in front of us? And I guess I land in having a more diverse pool. While also trying, you know, under preference, saying, sure, we'd prefer this, but maybe we find somebody that has, you know, 15 years worth of city manager experience, but doesn't have that educationally. But we, we, we find that individual be, to be a top candidate.
That's why I was making the statement there is that I, I don't want to make this pool so small that we give one person or nobody. I do want to make it wide enough that we do get a good variety of folks from different kinds of perspectives. I just don't want to waste people's time in mine, looking at books that just don't cut it.
So I have a different opinion on where your degree comes from or what your degrees in, in that. And it's probably still because of my own background, I spent very little time working in my degree area. Most of my career's been outside of my degree area. If somebody like Jenny, 10 years from now wanted to apply for a city manager role, she's a phenomenal person, but she doesn't have one of those degrees. She's an engineer. And you don't want to restrict somebody with the right experience. So that's to me, it's really important to go after that or related field. So you've got some degree, that's the minimum, right? But now tell us how your experience and training.
connects to the position.
Correct. That, that's what I'm looking.
Guess that's why I'm looking at you Eric to say to me. Don't make this a requirement, make this preferred. So if you do get the mix, or you think there's going to be plenty of people applying, we didn't get tremendous numbers. For Jordan's position. Well, we've got a few, and I think that's, I guess that's what I'm looking at you for, for paying you the dollars to tell me.
So putting it into the preferred category enables us to to make sure that those candidates that have those preferred attributes get pushed ahead of those that may not have that. So you already have, I think, what you're looking for under the preferred category. And by having it in here, that tells us this is what you prefer. This, and we will move those candidates forward that have those, that have, that meet those attributes.
Pop me into it. Move on.
Okay.
Just on that, the only thing I would maybe add is that if, you know, under the minimum. It says at least three years of upper level government management experience. You know, several of us, Carl and I both have government management experience. I would, you know, I would maybe just tweak that to say city management experience, since we are looking just, you know, to some extent for somebody with you know, city. Or at least, you know, seat talent, county, some, you know, something like that. I mean, forest service is not, you know, that's government experience, you know, FERC is government experience. Yeah, local government or whatever.
They're trying to restrict me from applying. Can you see that?
So Kathleen, just to clarify though, like Multnomah County Government, Metro, Clackamas County Government and ODOT type. You know, governor's department, tho- those candidates are, are fine.
Local government standard.
Yeah. Okay. Good. Yep. Me too.
They would probably lose out on the other criteria.
Yeah. I'm inclined to, we'll sweep out the lower priority candidates pretty quickly.
So counselor, that, that is a helpful distinction and we'll put local government in there. We do get people who do apply from, that have been with the federal government for years. And have been middle management that have been managing a lot of people, but it's not quite the same thing. So the local government distinction does help.
That was a big, quite, quite the same thing.
Resemble that remark.
Yeah. All right. Well, we, we kind of moved right into the preferred education experience. So with those two items there with the discussion we just had, are you good with that? All right. Let's move down to the desired skills and attributes. I'm just open it up in general for that entire section. If you have comments.
I'll go again. This is just really to enhance clarity and readability of it in my, in my lens. So
Sure.
Maybe not. I feel like we have infrastructure and public works gathered throughout this. So when I look at page two, it's got wastewater and water infrastructure. And page three has facilities and transportation. Page four has got broadband. I, I think you should put all those together. So that it just improves the clarity and readability of it. Cause when I, when I look at the desired skills and attributes and you have leadership, management, and mutation, those are management level. You know, things that correlate. When we're talking about infrastructure and public works, public works is transportation, water, sewer, energy facilities, parks and rec, safety. And maybe having those all in a row so that they stay together.
So you're saying, are you saying leaving them in separate paragraphs, but just reorganizing them so that they're all together?
Yeah. I mean, and this is all about preference now. I would put a, I would put a title that says infrastructure, public works and then drop all those as subbullets underneath it. Because they're all in line, but you have, the way you have it templated right now is just individual templates. And that's fine. I would just push them all together so they're not separated by community and economic development, public finance. You know, those are, that's just creating a gap and then you're going back to facilities. It's just about the way the, the page reads, at least from my.
Counselor, thank you for that comment. And I, I don't know, maybe you were in our office when we were discussing how to put this together. We did have a similar conversation of that. But I'll tell you why we did, we did this the way we did. And then if you folks want us to change it, we're happy to do that. We're, we were looking at the order here as sort of almost an order of importance. And the wastewater and water infrastructure piece came through so clearly as something that you really need to have somebody to help navigate. We felt we needed to peel that out and to make sure that it was its own attribute. And with, with regard to trans- transportation and, and transit, we didn't, we didn't, and facilities. We didn't hear the volume that we heard with regard to wastewater and water infrastructure. So we moved it kind of down, down the line. Now, we can group those very easily. And that's not a problem for us if that's what you would like to do.
And just for clarity, I wasn't suggesting anything about priority of importance. It was just about keeping them grouped together so that the candidate who's reading it would understand their role and everything that they saw. So that, again, just, just my lens. I do have one more thing for it.
Yes.
I saw, well, it's really the next subtopic is policy directives. But in the, in the header of desired skills and attributes, and I don't recall seeing anything over no, it was policy implementation.
Policy what?
Implementation. And when I was, you know, where you're talking about implementing policies and ordinances, resolutions adopted by city council to ensure the compliance with the laws and regulations, I, I didn't really see that written anywhere amongst those things, which I mean, it's implied. And then you go into the policy directives, which tell them what are the key things the city is working on. But I didn't see anything about actually implementing the policy that the city council.
We should stop that just for a second. Did have the sentence. Unique under housing policy homelessness. But I wonder if it's something that should be added to the general leadership and management. In the broad perspective.
Are you talking about the legislation as well as policy?
Not well specifically.
Cause I didn't see that.
Knowledge, knowledge and experience to support collaborative efforts, solidate policies, codes and resources to, and in this case it said. Reality is those things are for leadership, things that we need in general. In adding that something like that, should they, that upfront, that first boilerplate leadership.
That be under leadership and management or council relations?
Yes.
So yeah, I understand your point. Thank you. And I think that this is something we could easily incorporate either under leadership management and or under council relations. I think that's the place that that would fall under.
We're, we demand not have talked about it a lot. One of our challenges the last couple of years has been to try to become more policy oriented and sort of better job of managing our policies as a council.
Okay. All right. We, we will work on including that in one of those two sections or both.
So one thing I wanted to explore is coming off your, your comments you just made about water and wastewater and setting it as such a priority. I mean, obviously I, I think we all agree it's a, it's a huge priority. But just a reminder, when we got Jordan, you know, his big capital project experience was, I think it was a new city hall in Lake Oswego. And so it doesn't have to be just so specific to water and wastewater. It can be project management experience overall. And while obviously water and wastewater is going to be in the foreseeable future for us. I'd hate to only get you know, retired public works directors and, you know, just, you know, people from that sector applying for this because while it's a priority, I just, I want to make sure we're not over emphasizing how big of a priority that, that skillset is for us.
Can I, because that's the one area that I had some criticism on. If I read that wastewater and water infrastructure, it does feel like I am approving for a project manager. And we're not, we're recruiting for an executive to oversee these projects from an executive level. We have program managers and project managers and the public works director. What we're looking for is somebody who has that ability to understand their role with a program as an executive.
To build on that, and that was a big thing for me when I looked at this. I'd like to see somebody who can administrate those different segments. There are some people in our staff that are so good, it's mostly just stand out of their way, let them do their thing with a little bit of guidance and guardrails and such, but let them do their, that's the kind of person I want. I want somebody who can be a complement to these highly qualified people. We've done a pretty good job of getting some great staff in place. Wouldn't want to get in their way. It's a little different skillset.
Okay. Sponsorship, mentoring. Oversight.
I just want to say all those comments really go with mine. I totally agree with all of that. So.
If you look at that section, if you take out sentence number two.
Where, yeah.
I, I think, oh, wastewater and water infrastructure. If you, if you take out sentence number two, it starts with knowledge and ends with important.
Right.
That everything else I think fits holistically for that role. But that one is very specific about
Yeah.
Having that, that, you know what I mean?
It, it, it is. I really would like to see the word, you know, that executive role with programs and projects to me is what's missing. They're using the word facility.
Right.
Is that, is that, is what I. As well. So keep in mind, I'm a project manager, program manager. And that if we're dealing with people who understand that discipline, bringing a candidate in who understands that discipline is powerful. And so I would like it phrased in those words that relate to that discipline.
So if we were to strike that second sentence as you suggest. And then to put some language in that really goes to the concept of working, working with the staff and, and being able to support staff's efforts. Moving forward, is that?
So I, I'm, I'm, I don't like that as much.
Okay.
Now that I'm speaking for myself now, but I, so I agree with what Carl, Carl's saying in terms of, we have great staff, we really do. But I think more importantly is we run programs, one of the budget programs, or in the case of wastewater, we have a program manager outsourced that handles the entire program management things. They're going to be returning all kinds of metrics. But that, what I, we, I need, what we need, I was pretty selfish. What we need is that executive function. And if, if you're looking at it from a PMI perspective. The, the role is that governance function or that sponsorship function, somebody who understands the role as a sponsor of these programs. And understands, you know, their roles in. Yes, it is a facilitation role, but it's not in the weeds facilitation. It's coordinating finances, priorities, resources and so. Way up here.
Being an overarching champion, if you will.
Well, once again, champion is a little word if you go to the PMI.
Okay.
Which, isn't that mean something way down here, not the executive?
Okay.
So I like words more like coaching, mentoring, managing, negotiations. Those are kind of the words I, because I'm thinking of when I think about the executive conversation that Don's having.
And I think from where I sit, it's the ability to kind of understand the, the jargon and the. The strategies and, and all that data and the ability to kind of help. You know, if you had a, you know, Jenny's great because she's pretty, she kind of, I don't know, dumbs it down for us, but you know, she, she's able to deliver it to us so we can understand it. You, other engineers, you know, tend to kind of really data heavy and even you don't know what they're talking about. So having a city manager who can help and help synthesize the, the data into kind of digestible. Levels of understanding for both the council, but also for the public. So having that understanding of the project, the infrastructure, complex infrastructure projects, regardless of whether it's water, wastewater, whatever. To be able to kind of explain it and to deal with the interagency communications and things like that.
So if I'm hearing, what I'm hearing is that what you're really looking for is somebody who provides guidance and leadership to support staff as they initiate what's in front of them. So if, for example, you have Jenny, you need that city manager that's going to be able to be. Whichever word we want to use, but you're really providing guidance, leadership and support. To make sure that that staff can be successful in implementing their initiatives going forward.
And organization.
Yes.
When those conflicts arise with.
That's getting to your executive level, which is providing that. And each director has different things that they need from that leader. So would that be a kind of a consensus?
Just a good time to talk about how much we're going to pay this spectacular view. I, I'm just thinking to myself, though, we're asking for some pretty significant skills here. I know that we're having down the road a little bit before we get to the dollars, but I'm just thinking to myself, are we going to outsource ourselves? Are we looking at a Portland city manager versus a San Diego manager type, or doing these kind of words?
No, not at all. I mean, these are, these are great clarifications and I think points well taken. And we want to make sure that, that we hit the mark for you folks. And I understand exactly what you're saying about not getting the weeds, not being the project manager. But being the person who has the oversight that can help. Help move these things forward at their level within their role as a city manager. Not that they're down in public works. Trying to look at every schematic plan that there is with regard to sewer pipes.
Yeah, I like Jeff's experience as a city manager. Yeah, food's in the mud.
All right, I think we've got enough to, to work with it and. So I'll, we'll, we'll take a shot at that, but I would like to come back to your comments with regard to. Just all the different infrastructure elements that are kind of peppered throughout. Do you want us to try and combine those or are you good with those being separate?
I kind of think, so my thoughts on these, a lot of these go along, are tons of holes. So therefore I, I do like the idea of organizing them a little bit better, but I still think they should be separate.
Counselor, when you say organize better, what are you looking for?
So the way I initially understood what Chris was saying was put the, the. Like the better terms of public works style stuff in, in column form, right? But I still, rather than put it all as one big bullet and one big paragraph with subtitles. I do like the separate paragraphs for each of those specialties within.
So if we were to group these together, that, that would get it, get at your concern.
Well, the bottom line would be, are we going to give us, give these people that are going to apply. The correct information, be able to understand what they're applying for. I don't, because I, I would expect this person to be intelligent enough to be able to read these things. With the response, you know, resume, all the other Jensen matrix, which I look forward to finding all about.
You did hire people for that.
But I think that is a good idea, what you said, because, you know, if somebody doesn't have a lot of water wastewater experience, but they have more, you know, streets. Or something else, then they can kind of, you know, if they're all kind of grouped, they can kind of speak to those skills that we're looking for. With reference to the, these, you know, projects that aren't exactly lined up with water wastewater. But integrate it, you know, the response in, I guess is how I see that. Helping them organize their thoughts and also help us, you know, take those skills out.
Yeah, okay.
I think we have some really good language in the council goals to conserve as kind of like the initial introduction to that section. And then talking about maintaining sustainable infrastructure and then going into each section. I think we have it.
Yeah, great. And by the way. When it comes to rewriting this, we will be working with Jeff and Angie. On that to make sure we're hitting the mark, so.
Those two guys understand that.
Okay, all right, any other comments on the attribute section? That will. We'll move on and let's look at the policy directives. Any comments with regard to policy directives?
On the wastewater infrastructure expansion, the statement, that's, I think it's the third sentence, despite these efforts, the high volume. The high volume of sewage and stormwater flows, especially during what.
Yes.
That, that's incorrect, so. That overhaul we're doing is because of past. Problems and so that sentence, we're talking about those overflows and things, that was all before we started any of our upgrades, but now are just that significantly. Not saying that we never have a problem, but it's, it's not in spite of.
Right, okay. So we'll change the beginning of that sentence to reflect that.
Just instead of has, like, just make sure, just make sure it's very much in the past, because that is.
Yeah, you're absolutely right.
Yeah, just was looking over it again.
Okay, great, perfect, that's kind of comment we're looking for.
Yeah.
Back up just for one sec, I was just mentioning, as I was looking at it, I'm, I'm missing anything about emergency management. Is that, is that necessary to have that in there?
No, and again, you know, where these came out of were from the interviews that we did. And what came collectively from everybody that we interviewed. We did not hear a lot about emergency management.
I'm just pretty sure that's, that was Jordan's role. So I was, that's one of his roles. Doesn't need to be mentioned that.
I would be one that didn't bring it up. Didn't occur to me.
Well, ditto, because.
I don't think I brought it up.
It's not, obviously, no, it's not. It's not, it's not your forethought, but I mean, at the front of our brain right now. But I think that I do agree that the emergency management and as we continue to work towards redundancies and, and all. I do think that is something that, I'm not saying it has to have its own paragraph.
Would you like to add it under leadership and management attributes? Management or crisis, including emergency conditions?
I, I think it belongs under intergovernmental relations, because that's, you know, that's kind of, you know, you're working with fire department and, you know, sheriff's office and.
Sounds good, Sue.
Yeah.
As a city manager, you don't really have a lot.
Sorry, I didn't mean to bet, you know.
So that's, that's fine, rather hear about it now, so.
I would say, counselor, it may actually even deserve its own bullet. It doesn't have to be a big one, but it, it involves intergovernmental, but it also involves things just here within the city organization. It's funny, you know, the chief knows that we, on a staff level, we had a meeting today on the natural hazard mitigation plan, which the council will be seeing later this year. Of this kind of our initial work on. It, it doesn't get talked about a lot, but it is important and it is something that, you know, probably should be mentioned, at least in my opinion, under a certain section.
Should that.
Everything goes that way. If you've got a big issue, if the earthquake happens, we won't even be thinking about wastewater. We'll all be going down the crack in the hole of Portland. Is that described pretty well?
We.
No worries.
We have some, we have some language that we could offer.
You don't like this?
If there's, if there's an earthquake, we're totally going to be worrying about water and wastewater, but anyway.
Very true. reported Johnson bottles. So. He, uh, should that, to that point though, rather than, and I'm cool with its own paragraph as well. But should that go under preferred experience, you know, just, and I'm just throwing this out there. ICS experience, emergency management, operations. As a higher level, I mean, I, I know that's something that. Is an executive level. And said, well, that trains this year on the ICS and that. And I made, I'm just throwing this out there as a spitball. I don't, I don't know if that's a good idea or not.
That's your discretion as to what you want.
You could say, you know, experience with ICS or the ability to get it, that's kind of, because, you know.
Or is that something that's just too much into the weeds for something like this? I guess that's my question.
I'm a little concerned about, there's a number of small, I shouldn't say smaller, less crucial in our face. That could be lumped into this and I'm thinking about personnel management. Not that it's unimportant, it's just that not in my face at the moment. But the emergency management, and like, time I might come up with some others, but I, I think there are some things. We don't spend a lot of time with until they become in our face kind of stuff. And so I'm a little concerned about pulling out each of those different items. Because again, we're going to end up with this, the. Sample is, is the unicorn thing. They'll never get somebody has all these different pieces.
And, and emergency management, and let's just be honest with how much focus we've given it as a council last two and a half years. Which is half of one work session or something that didn't go well, I mean.
Yeah.
Unless we choose to prioritize that and push it more, regardless of what experience they come in with, we're not going to do much there.
I think you would also gather that from based off their experience as a skill set that they would have, that they could learn based off their, their whole experience level. I think that's what you could teach.
I don't, I, I thought, I, I kind of recall Mike having to go to the ICS training. Ernie, do you guys, your staff go to ICS training?
Jenny's staff as well, there's a lot of staff that try to, yeah, just at, at least the lower levels of it, some more than others. I was gonna say, when I started with the state, I had no government experience with ICS and in my first year, I went to several course works. And then I came back and had a draft agency policy report, so. It just, you could get trained in it.
I think it'd be unusual to see it in the qualification section for city manager, but I'd be, but having it in the kind of further in, in the, into the body of this sort of makes sense.
Does that sound okay?
Just. To roll the handle.
Should it just fit under intergovernmental relations, I was, I'm just trying to, as, to avoid a whole paragraph, I guess, in mind. And I'm fine with that, I can be sold either way, I don't know if it's the right answer, I've never done this before, so.
So. Again, it, it depends on where this priority lies for you. In conjunction with everything else that you've got down there on the attributes. You know, for. For sisters, for example, emergency management was a big deal. For obvious reasons. I, I, only you can tell us how big of a deal it is for you at this point in time. But if you were to include it in, under intergovernmental relations. Then at least you've got a foothold, if you will, for emergency management. And so that we, when we're scanning through applications, then we're catching that.
Stan, do you have a preference if it goes under intergovernmental relations or standalone paragraph?
No, I mean, it really can go under both. I mean, you're right, Kathleen, you're. Jordan's, you know, doing everything from Clackamas County Fire to Clackamas County Government, their emergency department to the state. So it could go intergovernmental, it could be a standalone, I'm good either way.
Jeff, why do you think it needs to be its own paragraph? Probably because I'm in the midst of doing the. Being quite honest, yeah, I, I think that we were reminded, and chief, feel free to speak up if you disagree, but I mean, I think we were reminded of, this is something that gets looked at every several years and it probably deserves more than that. You know, and, and I'm, I'm, I mean, that's why I'm conflicted, isn't it?
But it's, but to the earlier point though, if, if everyone in government's going through this training. I mean, does it, are we really, it sounds like we're not going to hire anyone outside of government. So it sounds like just about everyone's going to have gone through this train and be able to lean on something in some sort of fashion.
I'm of the opinion that this is something that if they meet all the rest of the criteria, we can get them trained, train them, present their priorities appropriately and, and make that happen.
This area will not keep me from selecting somebody.
We could, why don't we just put it in intergovernmental relation?
Cool, let's do that. Okay, so we will incorporate in, in our government, intergovernmental relations, all right. You ready to go back to the policy directives?
Yeah.
Okay, any, any other comments on the wastewater infrastructure expansion? Going, 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 gone, okay. How about the drinking water reinvestment? Looks good. Hearing none. And move on to the next section, community campus park project.
Can you get the right total amount from Jeff? It's not 1.5, it's significantly more than that.
Okay. All right, we'll get the right number in there. Anything else like that, that we didn't hit the mark on? All right, I'm going to keep going. Police chief recruitment, any comments on that?
The recently began operating, I don't think is correct unless I'm misunderstanding something. On second.
Thought we were close, but not there.
We've been a 24/7.
Yeah, we've been doing that for a long.
We operate a 24 by 7.
Okay, all right, well.
Well, over 20 years.
Okay, we'll strike, we'll strike the recently and just say that, that you run a 24/7 service, so, okay.
Hey, now I have a question, I mean, I'm, I'm open to. Thoughts about it, because I know it's kind of come up, but it says, the, the next city manager is expected to lead a transparent and fair selection process to select the next police chief. And I was going to put in, to lead a transparent and fair recruitment and selection process. I think I'll be about that. Anybody have a concern about that?
Okay. We'll put recruitment in there as well, thank you. Anything else on the police chief?
Well, don't give us too much of a thank you, we haven't picked the firm yet, you know. That was a joke, that was a joke.
All right. Workforce capacity and space needs assessment, any comments on that? Not seeing any, okay.
Through all that. You know, the thing that kind of concerns me a little bit is, you know, we only have so much tax dollars right now. And so, you know, yes, we're growing, but that balance of being able, you know. The reason we're still small is because we don't have, you know, a huge amount of money to kind of be hiring all these new, new people. And so I understand we need it. But it's, part of it is, it's having to kind of balance, do we contract out certain things or do we hire in-house? And, and so balancing that, how to kind of, you know, I'd hate to say that, do more with less, but, but kind of how to balance. You know, getting things done with our growing population, but within our limited tax base.
Isn't that kind of covered in that next to the last sentence? Strategies.
Within available. Yeah, I think so.
We, we definitely heard that and we, we were trying hard to thread that needle. To make sure that that, that concept's in there.
Well, the other part of the other thought that came to my mind, and I think you heard it, you heard from me, I know. About, um, the whole idea of, you know, work from home versus work in the office.
Heard it from me too.
Yeah. And so I don't know, you know, is that, is that kind of in here or, and I'm not saying that they need to, you know. In the office every day or something, but I see that last thing.
Yeah. I'm hoping that was what was meant by that last thing was coming up with the policies, the appropriate policies for, it sounds pretty detailed. I, I would expect that whoever's in that position will. Look at that very closely and decide. And we have a little industry is great at the end of the year. To me, that last one is broad enough that, you know, whatever. They have to come up with a strategy. They gotta keep us happy.
Yeah. I mean, it's a matter of public service.
And they gotta keep it.
Public service.
And they gotta keep their employees happy and some.
Yeah. Okay.
And they gotta keep Angie happy.
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you. And I, and I, I would concur that I, I think that that's something that would be inherent, uh, with, with what's said here. It's easy to get down into the weeds and some of the policy stuff and, uh, with regard to the work at home issue, every city that we're working with is dealing with that right now. And, you know, how much of that is a change in the norm and how much of that is, uh, th- this is a, a one-time deal and you're going to move on to other issues. Okay. Um, so that takes us all the way through the profile and, uh, with those comments, so we will make those changes. Uh, and run them by Jeff and Angie and make sure that, uh, um, they're okay with it. So, and we assume that, uh, you're, you're all right if they sign off on it.
Okay. I'm sorry, but I'm gonna go back. Yes. Appreciation for standing. One of the things that you asked me was, do they need to live in Sandy? And I said, no, I don't think they do. But I want, I think it's important that they, you know. Come to, you know, evening events or go to a after hours, you know, chamber meeting or, or, um. You know, do a weekend, you know, solve cleanup or whatever to be visible and stuff. And so that willingness to kind of. Show up to, you know, to, to the community, so that the community is aware of that and, and communicating with them. So I don't know how you. Did that kind of get addressed in here?
It, it did counselor. Uh, we did talk about visibility in the community. I think it was under community engagement.
All right.
So. Okay.
What was that, by the way? I was the same sort of thought as Kathleen, Nikki, that person had to be in the city. I don't, you're just curious.
I, I don't think it. I don't think they have to. I thought, I, I think I said it was preferred, not required.
I thought community, the nice and low five five.
I, because I, I thought community visibility is, is where they need to be seen.
Absolutely.
I.
Curious, which is big whether they lived here or not. If they lived here, it'd be better, but I, I wouldn't exclude them if they didn't live here. And when it, Jordan was not, that's for sure. When a candidate asks you, how much of my time do I have to spend in the office? What will you tell them?
First of all, um, if they're asking that question. They're not that familiar with the job. So I mean, you're looking, you're looking for somebody who has been in the C suite. So.
I work in the federal government and a lot of those C suite people work at home a lot now. So. Surprisingly.
Now, I mean, we're, we're very clear when, when candidates ask us, I know, can we work remotely? And I've had only one candidate in the last three years ever asked that question. That, uh, the answer is no. This is.
I sit here educated. Thank you. These are city managers, right?
Yes.
I think, you know, given dual careers that people face trying to find jobs and stuff, the fact that, you know, and that's understandable that they don't necessarily have to. As long as they can be visible and weekend, a weekend day or evening or something like that. It's.
I would just say one, one last thing to go back to what Stan said originally, um, sorry, the mayor said originally is. Anyway, that we can find a different way to, um, consider alternative experience. Because I feel like we've got such a prescriptive. Profile here that, you know, when it comes to education and experience. That somebody who may not be more formalized will not apply. And then that worries me about D E I and whether we're being inclusive of, of everyone. And there's nothing in here about D E I. There's no statements about D E I. So it, I want to make sure that we are considering alternative pathways. And I know that at the very front, it says equivalent combination of education experience may be considered, to me, that's very benign. It's not enough to let somebody know who's reading this, that, hey, let's look at your breadth of, of experience. And, and, and put it in there and any way we can articulate that to an applicant. And we don't scare them away with all these details. And I don't know how you get a good balance for that, or at least. Cause this is, this is like long and a lot of stuff. So I just want to make sure that we're getting a good selection of diverse applicants that come in. And, and feel like it's a job that they get. So whoever they.
Seems like that's almost impossible. Just from the crutch, like you said, through the criteria.
That's why.
If you're, if you're looking for seasoned experience, you look at the demographics of who currently fills those roles across the region. I don't think it's a very diverse group.
Not in Oregon, it's not.
Concerns me though is, uh, when I was in the forest service and Kevin, there were certain quotas, I'll put it that way, that were required. I'm not anticipating that here.
Sure to give him.
Assume that when you do the brochure, you're going to say things like, you consider all candidates.
Oh, yes. That's, oh, that's like, no, yeah.
Yeah. We all, we always, but, uh, the city is an equal opportunity employer. Yeah. So we'll cover those bases.
Be blind.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's, I, I think the hard part is. From an equity, diversity and inclusion perspective. It does require proactively recruiting from a broad net. And if you made the filter criteria so restrictive that. How, how does somebody who falls into that category get their first years of experience? Well, we're saying not here.
Yes.
That's what we're saying.
And I'm just, and I'm just mentioning, did we look at this? Did we, are, are we aware of it? Are we, will we write this out? You know, because this is just a draft. When we get there, will we consider alternative experience pathways that, that aren't necessarily what we've outlined. To expand our selection. And I'm not saying underqualified. I'm saying experienced, but in a different way. And, and how does that person, when they read this on the web? And they say, I think I might fit this. And they actually apply because what we're talking about is there, that group of individuals not even applying because they feel excluded. Cause we've made so strict.
Is there anything that we can or should add that would make it more attractive to somebody who might feel like. Go on the friendship.
So first of all, let me, let me just say that, uh, in our advertising that we do for these positions. We advertise nationally. We also advertise with specific, um, demographic groups. There, there is, for example, a, a black public administrators group, um, nationally, and we advertise with them. The same, uh, with Hispanic. Um, so, you know. We try to cast the net as broadly as possible, uh, in that regard. The, in terms of the, the terminology, um, we're very careful about the terminology we use. We have somebody who is on our team who is responsible for, um, applying a D E I lens to all of our products. And, um, she's given us great advice, you know, so for example, we no longer talk about a candidate being a fit. Because fit now is code for a, you're looking for somebody who's going to be just like us. And, uh, so we don't use that, that terminology anymore. So we're pretty careful about how we. How we craft these to make sure that if they're not exclusionary, at least, you know, to the best of our abilities.
Yeah. I, I mean, this says, um. You know, you mentioned inclusion, you know, the, the city manager should demonstrate emotional competency, transparency, humility, inclusion, ethics and accessibility when communicating with all individuals. And that, and that said, I, I would also add that I. You know, the, the place to get. I, I couldn't see us hiring somebody who doesn't have any city management experience, regardless of how great they are because. I think that, you know, this job requires some experience. We've got such big issues that we're dealing with. That if you don't have that kind of a background, you're going to really struggle. And it's going to be difficult to kind of, it's, it's a very steep learning curve if you don't. And I don't think we can really afford that, especially, you know, we've got so much going on. Um, I think the place for those folks is to kind of get, you know, assistant, you know, assistant city managers and things like that. That's where, you know, they can, they can learn, but not, not at the top, right?
See, Catherine, I would, I would argue with you and say, look, I, I've, and I'm not applying, so I'm just gonna say it out loud. I've got twenty five years private sector, twenty years executive level leadership, five years state government, divisional leadership. Everything we've just described, I have all this experience right here. I have it all. I've never been in a city. I've done everything, testified in front of the senate, sit on the waste means, maybe even testify. You don't need city manager.
Yeah, but do we want a candidate like you?
But.
Yeah.
But that's what I've got. Sorry. I, I hear what you're saying though, is you want city management experience, but I'm saying there are other. There are other roles that people can do to get the same exact experience that isn't city managed.
I know.
Over their, over their career.
Yeah.
And I don't want to exclude people who don't have city management experience.
I, and I totally get where you're coming from. And just to kind of have some real word experience there. You know, the forest service is, you know, the, the new forest supervisor. I don't think ever worked for the forest service before. And then, you know, the same, I, I believe that's the case with the new district ranger at Zigzag. Never worked for the forces, doesn't know fish, you know, fish from foul, you know. Kind of thing. And I'm, I'm sure they do know fish from foul, but, and I don't mean to mean that, but they have that leadership experience and all that.
They have to find themselves in that interview process.
Yeah.
Show that they have the experience.
And I think, I think that's okay for, for certain things. I do know that, you know, when you're talking about wilderness policies and all those other things, that, you know, there's just some good things where it really helps when those people have some familiarity. With what wilderness is or what the forest surface is or things like that. And so I get that there's, you know, I, I think it's. Port to not limit us, but I also think sometimes it's helpful if they know.
So I think we're in a pretty good spot because, you know, Chris, to your point, I don't think we've communicated anything to Eric here today. Or, or described anything that wouldn't take somebody with that skillset that you're describing. Have them potentially consider pushing them forward as a, you know, as a potential candidate. But Kathleen's point, I mean, on the city experience and the local government experience, I mean, that is clearly preferred, I think, by council. Um, but you know, I, I don't think anything in here, I mean, if you look at the minimum requirement for education, I mean, it's a bachelor's degree. You know, I mean, everything else is just, uh, is just preferred and desired skills and attributes. And so I, I. You know, if you're somebody with that kind of experience that you're describing, Chris, I think you're, you, you know that you're qualified to be a city manager and, and you're definitely well within your grasp to apply. And I don't talk about you, I mean, someone with that experience, uh, stepping forward to apply for it. Uh, but I think you also know that you have a bit of a hurdle, you know? You know that you're not a city manager and, and haven't worked in a, you know, city municipality. And so I don't think there's anything here that. A prevents someone of that skillset to apply, uh, but B, I, I think that individual does have a bit of a hurdle and probably should knowingly know that. You know, going into the application process.
Yeah, I agree with you a hundred percent. I was just, uh, contending what I heard councillor Walker say, which was, uh, the city manager experience. And, um, I'm just saying it's similar, similar.
Yes. I think what we've got written up. Collects a broad set of candidates. And then when we get to sit and deliberate for those top three or five or whoever, then we can kind of weigh that, those nuances there. One of the things I have always thought that made city managers' application to Sandy is that. We are connected to a whole range of possibilities for different ethnic groups. The Portland area, we've got the different groups that are living here in the city as well as, you know, possibility of connecting with them. In different parts of the metro area. I, I think, you know, if you're looking for somebody you might want to move. The place that has some diversity and the possibilities of finding that diversity. Here in the Portland metro area.
Counsel, um, if you, if you're okay with the, the profiles as it is, I, I would, uh, suggest we move on. Cause I do have a few other things I'd like to cover if that's all right with you folks or.
Yes, please.
Okay. So with regard to, uh, the hiring procedures, this will go a lot quicker. The hiring procedures are what we wrote up in our proposal. So you're not seeing anything different than you saw in our proposal. Um, we're going to follow that same process that, that we, uh, that we had outlined. I will, um, suggest to you that there are some, uh, key points that, uh, I want to make you aware of in, in the process. So we will be, uh, assuming that you do adopt, uh, the profile and the hiring procedures on the twentieth. Uh, we are scheduled to launch this, uh, from on July 10th and it'll run to August 6th, which we typically go for, uh, four weeks. That's, that's standard. Once we, that happens, we will gather the applications, we will apply them against the criteria that you have outlined for us. Um, and then we will interview, uh, by Zoom, uh, that the top, usually it's the, the top 10. And we might go a little above or a little below depending upon what we've got in the pool. And based on that, we will come back to you in executive session. I hope you have this on your schedule on August 21st. Because when we come back, we will bring you everybody that we've interviewed. And we will bring you notebooks that will have all their app, application materials in them and we'll present those candidates to you. And we will be looking for you to give us guidance as to who you would like to move forward, up to four candidates move forward as finalists. We don't do these meetings by Zoom, uh, because we're protective of the candidates, uh, that have not publicly declared that they are candidates. So, uh, that's the reason that we do this in hard copy in executive session. Once we get that, uh, designation from you, uh, we will offer you some recommendations, but ultimately, of course, it's your decision who you want to move forward as finalists. Uh, once that happens, uh, then we will, uh, start doing background checks and reference checks, uh, on the candidates. And, uh, then we move into what we refer to as the finalist week. And these are the other dates I was hoping that you'll have on your calendar. So, uh, the finalist week is going to be, uh, the, the week of September 11th. And starting with Tuesday, September 12th, we have two community, uh, two receptions, one for the staff and one for the community. We highly encourage council to attend the community reception as observers. To see how the candidates interact with your community. And following that, on the Wednesday, we do panel interviews with the department heads, with other public administrators in the area. As, as well as, uh, with the community, as with community leaders. Following that on September 14th, this is the other date that you'll want to have on your calendar. On September 14th will be your interviews with the candidates. And we schedule longer interviews than we do with the panel interviews. So you have a chance to. To really talk with the candidates. And then finally, uh, on Friday, September 15th, we have the deliberations. And so we hope that you have that on your calendar as well.
Friday night, really?
Day morning. It's the morning.
Friday, the morning, the morning meeting?
I'm sorry, councillor.
This says three P M, Friday fifteenth. Is it, is it?
Where does it say that, council?
Well, I just have a, on my calendar.
All right. Yeah, it should be in the morning.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. What we'll do during that.
Thursday is a big chunk of the day.
Yeah, we do an hour and a half interviews. So you know, that's six hours. If you have four candidates, six hours of interviews. So, um, going back to the deliberations, uh, that Friday morning, we will download, uh, your perceptions from your interviews. We will then share with you all the feedback that came back from, uh, the references, from the background checks, from the panels, from the community or from both receptions. And after that, uh, we facilitated your deliberative process. And, um, at that point, uh, if you've chosen the candidate to move forward, what we do is I'll step out of the room, I'll call that candidate, make sure they're going to say yes. And, uh, come back into executive session, let you know. And I've only had one person say no ever, but So, yeah, I mean, and, and the, in the case of the person that said, no, they, they then moved on to number two on their list. But, uh, we'll come back in to you and you come out of executive session and you have the opportunity then to announce who the selected candidate is.
And all that's happening on Friday?
Yes.
Okay.
So I mean, we'll have a regular council session on Friday. At a undetermined time after the executive session includes. So it's a little, how do you, how do you announce that? With the timing. Is it time certain?
Well, we, yeah, what we do is say it will be no, no sooner than.
No sooner than, sure.
Yeah, but, but following the executive.
Very short meeting.
Yeah.
So are we having Monday meeting too on the eighteenth?
No, we're gonna live here. I move that we don't.
We'll talk with the mayor about the agenda.
All right.
All right.
Question and, um, there's some biasness in my question here. So I'm trying not to put it out there. Describe very quickly the community reception meeting. Is it, what's the invitation?
So we rely on, on you folks. We, we will give you an invite to advertise it to the community and we rely on you folks to get the word out through your networks. And, and then it's, it's whoever comes. Now, what we do is we treat it like speed dating. So we have, we divide the, the groups up, we divide the audience up into however many candidates there are. So therefore we have four different tables. And then we rotate the candidates between them in fifteen or twenty minute intervals. So everybody has a chance to meet and talk with them. And then when they leave, they have an opportunity to fill out a survey either on paper. We, we have a QR code to them use. So they can just do a QR code and fill it out.
Swat left or right thing.
Any, any other questions?
So, um, is, I know we've got the, um, session coming up here, right, to adopt this stuff, right? And then in, between that and that, we could be eleven. There's, are any other, did I miss anything? Are there's any other required attendance from us?
Uh, we will have an executive session on August twenty first to determine the finances.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
And we, we will keep you informed through Jeff and Angie, um, as to how things are going. So.
And I just want to make sure you're, I, you know, I just hear about these, you know, people that got hired and afterwards they, you know, find out horrible things that any Google search would have. It says, I know I, our, when we hired you, it said that you guys do all that.
Yes, before, before we do the Zoom interviews, we do a Google search on anything that's work related. So that it, so if they haven't brought it up in their application, we have a chance to ask them about it.
Okay.
So we want to make sure to give them a, a, a fair opportunity to, to share their side. All right, I, I have one other item I'd like to, uh, address with you, and that has to do with the salary range. And so first of all, um, what we're looking, uh, for in this salary range is to have to have one that, that sort of gets at the core skills and experience that you're looking for. That's hitting the mark in terms of those can't, that, that level of candidate.
Can you start with, with this, Jordan, Jordan, Mike?
I can. Yeah, no. So, and I think it's important to account for the cost of living adjustment that was included in the budget that you all just adopted. So accounting for that, uh, we budgeted for the city manager to make a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, uh, in the upcoming year, starting July first. For context.
And including all things like the car, telephone, but that's just gross.
I believe that's just salary.
Um, it may include the budget, Jordan didn't take, uh, benefits. So there would be some additional.
It doesn't include health insurance. It doesn't, that's just.
But that's include car, phone, some of the other things that we expect them to be gone on.
Jeff, do you know how that stacks up against maybe five or seven like city sizes?
He's gonna hand you a piece.
So Jeff, can you answer though, how much the, we'll call it the perch or the benefits or the size?
Fifty is the car allowance and sixty is the data allowance. Do you have a kind of a cost of government of the whole position? Not out of my brain at the moment, but I can provide that.
Yeah, their, their health insurance and all of that is no different.
If you go full family, it's about two thousand cost to the city. The employee will pick up ten percent of that cost.
So the same as all the other city employees.
Okay. So I, I'm gonna hand this out and that, uh, we have ten comparable cities that we looked at, we averaged them out. Um, I also threw in, um, some recent recruitment ranges from recruitment that we've done in the last year. Um, so you can see what other cities were offering in terms of a range. And then we have a recommendation, but I'd like to just kind of set a little context here. So we've been in a situation in the last two, three years where the market's, uh, been saturated with opportunities. And during the pandemic, we really saw a smaller group of, of candidates come forward. Um, where we used to get thirty, forty applications, um, we were starting to get more along the lines of ten. That, that has started to change. And the last one we did, we, I believe we had twenty-five applications, uh, on, on the last city manager recruitment that we did. Uh, it was a very deep bench. And I. It might've been on the other side of the mountain, yes. They had some very competitive candidates. So, so, um, you know, we're also facing a, a situation with the housing market where most cities are, are seeing a rise in, in housing. And so it makes it more difficult for candidates who might be coming from a smaller city where the, where the housing is cheaper to be able to move to a, a city where it's more expensive. We've also seen inflation happening right now, and that's impacting, uh, salaries as well as, we're finding that candidates are being more selective, uh, because they can be. And so, you know, it still is, uh, we'll see how things go, but it's still a candidate's market at the moment. We may be seeing a pivot here. But, uh, it, it's such that we have seen candidates drop out of the finalist process uh, along the way too. So.
So as you're getting ready to put that out, what does a range mean? I mean, I understand what a range means in the private sector. What does a range mean for these kinds of positions? What determines where they land within the range?
Well, that is, uh, first of all, that's your discretion. Um, but generally speaking, the more experience and the more checkboxes that they've checked off on your attributes list should bring them.
Any other private sector.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We advertise it for range and then we determine where they fit within that.
Yes.
I thought we negotiated a little bit with Jordan.
There will be a negotiation.
There was with Jordan, I'm pretty sure. Figuring out, if he wants something in.
Yeah, I, I, you know, once, once you've made a selection, there's still a.
I did want to clarify, uh, councillor Exter, I, I was able to look it up. The number of a hundred and sixty-three actually does include the vehicle. It doesn't include any other, but it does include the vehicle.
Does this say how long the city manager put in those roles that have that paid? I'm assuming the city works a lot, but the state, do they go, they have steps?
So it used to be, so our city manager used to be on our salary schedule. It's not anymore. It's a contract position. So we have a lot of points.
All right. So what you have in front of you, uh, there were ten cities that we, that we took a look at, and these are current salaries. State and Malala, Silverton, Cottage Grove, Monmouth, Gladstone, Cornelius, the Dals, Troutdale and Dallas. And the populations range, uh, between, uh, eight thousand and eighteen thousand, uh, population. And these are in order of the size of the population. Uh, so you can see the salaries there on the right-hand side. And, um, you know, the, the lowest salary being, uh, with, uh, Silverton at, at one thirty-five and change, one thirty-five thousand and change. Um, the sour, the highest salary being in Gladstone, uh, at a hundred and eighty-five thousand and change. So that, that's kind of the range. These salaries average out to a hundred and fifty-four thousand. Actually, I didn't realize we put the cents in there, but four hundred and fifty-one and thirty-three cents. So that's what the average looks like. The recent recruitments that we've done, Sisters, uh, had a hundred and twenty to a hundred and sixty thousand dollar range with a uh, population of thirty-four hundred. Staden, uh, was a hundred and twenty-two to a hundred and fifty-two thousand with a population of eighty-two hundred and some. Fairview, uh, was a hundred and thirty-five to a hundred and sixty, population of just over ten thousand. And Cornelius, uh, was a hundred and forty to a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Uh, and their population is fourteen thousand and some. So, um, looking, looking at what other cities have been doing, uh, looking at the average, and what you're looking for, our recommendation is that you go out with a hundred and forty to a hundred and seventy thousand as your, as your range.
Why not one seventy-five?
You can, you can do that.
For not being the top dog out there. Why, what is it?
Well, we wanted to make sure that we were, uh, being within your, your budgetary means now. So I, I, I guess I would have to defer to you on that. Obviously, the higher you go, the more qualified candidates theoretically will apply.
Yeah, right.
And, and sorry, does this, the salary we're talking about include the, the car thing or not?
That's a negotiation point.
Some, some of this is subject to how you negotiate.
I think people are gonna interpret this as based up, right?
So one, one concern I, I have maybe is having just gone through the interim city manager negotiation uh, with Tyler. And so I, I have a little bit of a feeling for what the assistants and, and, and folks are, direct reports are making. I mean, wouldn't we possibly be in a situation where we'd be hiring a city manager that's making less than their direct reports under this salary range?
We should not be. So our direct reports will be under this amount.
At the lower.
Yes. So we're, we're okay there, mayor.
Okay, okay.
Well, somebody was mentioning one seventy-five and, you know, the car allowances ends up to be almost five thousand dollars a year. So one seventy and then having another five.
But what is, when you advertise this, if, if you have a one seventy-five, it looks more attractive than a one seventy. That doesn't mean that we won't offer one forty for the car allowance, depending on their qualifications, but it's, I, I, I think we should be competitive with a Cornelius, that's, or whoever else goes out. You know, at the same time.
Or the Troutdale city manager.
Well, that's exactly right. I don't want any, I don't want anyone not applying because of the high-end part of that salary is kind of where I'm at. I, I, I want someone who thinks that they deserve more than that to consider applying for this position.
And, and we are growing. We're definitely be wanting to give this guy, person, this person's really good. Raises it to go along. If Jordan, I would expect us to think the same kind of respect. So I guess I'm in favor of one seventy-five.
Angie, how does the, do these work like normal civil? Normal city jobs or there's like you bump up and, you know, a certain percentage or anything like that?
No, so all your directors are, they're all on the salary schedule. No max out at, you know, range seven. Um, but this is a contract position. So you guys can set the salary with what you want. Um, my understanding right now with budget wise, it's like pretty much anything over one sixty-five, one seventy, there's probably enough to be in a budget adjustment.
So I guess my question is, you brings, you bring, you bring somebody at one sixty, right? Is there, is there a, a, a process to get them to one seventy-five or is that something that we continue to negotiate?
So how we have Jordans is that as we do a cost of living nets, the manager also gets a cost of living increase. So they'll get that bump. And then you do have negotiability in regards to how you say, somebody may say, I don't want the car allowance. I would prefer to have this. Or you, you, you have some ability to do some negotiation there. But I don't know if I'm answering your question.
I'm just, I'm wondering how we, how we get from one sixty to the top it. Is it, is that a set like three and a half percent a year on top of your COLA? Or is that, is that, is that something that we negotiate every year when we do their, their evaluation? What does that look like?
There you go.
That's it. Okay, it's the evaluation. Typically, a city manager applicant will, that'll be an important part of the, they'll say, I want an annual review and and that'll be an opportunity to discuss.
But this range doesn't limit what those.
That's, this is just. This is the initial.
It's not like a government pay scale where that is the max you'll ever get to while you're a grade fourteen or whatever.
It's a contract employee. It's different.
I'm assuming we can start at one forty if you want.
Yes, you could, but that's the same, go ahead.
I'm with fairer one seventy-five at least. There's a part of me that's even wondering about one eighty, so.
I have a question on that. Um, so, and I don't know how, I, I'd like to get some insights on how it was with Jordan, but you know, if you say top is one seventy-five and then you pick the person, you know, can they say, well, you know, I, I want, I want one eighty or whatever. So, I mean, does it, or is one eight, one seventy-five our top or, or is that the top where they, the person, the selected person starts negotiating? How did that work with Jordan, I guess? Well, it's different with Jordan because we had him on the salary schedule. So when somebody's on the salary schedule, you can't go off, you can't go over the top of that salary schedule. So it's one twenty's the top. That is the top we can provide. There are some additional, like you can add the car allowance then ten or the data allowance. In this scenario, um, you have negotiability. So you really don't have a top. When you put a range down, you are trying to say to the candidate, this is the top of the range. We're not going to go above that. And the reason for that is based off what you have as your attributes and what you are requiring of this candidate. You were saying this position is worth this salary. So you want a range for negotiability, but you also don't want to not have a top to also say this is what this position can pay for. That's where it gets a little bit, like you look at a Troutdale or you look at, um, let's say you're out a moment and you can't find a candidate to go out there. They may pay more than say we are because it's really difficult to get a candidate to move out to Monmouth and stay. So sometimes you're also paying based off location or difficulty in recruitment. Um, I actually think we will probably receive a lot of candidates for this position, even if we go to one seventy-five councillor. You're gonna, that's a good, that's a good healthy range. But where do you, so with the negotiations then, you know, do we start in the middle and, and, and then we say, well, we, since you only have, you know, ten years and not twenty years, that's why we're not going up to one seventy-five or how does all that? So, so welcome to recruitment and to, and to uh, working on negotiations. So basically, you take a look at the candidates, the top four, and then you interview. And as Eric said earlier, in essence, you're gonna say this candidate is coming to us highly qualified. Then you know you're probably gonna need to put out an offer that's quantifying to that experience. If you have somebody coming in that maybe doesn't have the same thing and we know that they're gonna be on a learning curve here, here and here, then we're gonna say, alright, you're probably gonna start lower on that range and then we're gonna work up. You also have the flexibility to say in a year, we're gonna reevaluate. And at that point, we're gonna give you a five thousand dollar bump. So you guys have some flexibility on what we work on. It's gonna be based off the candidate that sits in front of you and what they're bringing to the table. I don't know.
I'm also looking at your list of prices here on different city managers around us. I see there's a lot of them that would be getting a raise, assuming that they were highly skilled. I have no a couple, three of these. I, I like being able to say to some of these local folks, you know, you might get a raise. Up here. So to me, I think up in the, the annual amount I think is important.
I stretch further because I looked at the same thing, Carl. I said, look at Staten, Malala.
Oh, yeah.
And Silverton, these are cities all under ten, let's say ten thousand or less. We're bigger than them. They're one, one thirty-five and one forty-nine. Why shouldn't our minimum be one fifty? And then why can't our top be one eighty? Because that's a range. And if you're starting at one fifty, you're beating all your small cities that are underpopulated for us. So you're gonna get one of those city managers or somebody with experience coming to us. It's gonna have upper mobility. And then if you have somebody in a, in a larger city, like a, like it says here, like a, a Troutdale, for instance, who's seventeen thousand, I'm not advocating for those managers at all in the same positions. That, that's not gonna be a far stretch from Sandy and make the same amount of money, which is a smaller town. So I, I like the one fifty to one eighty range myself.
So let's consider a hypothetical example of an assistant um, city manager who's making, I don't know, what's our last contract with our deputy or with our acting?
That rank for me?
Manager. Let me do some quick math.
Yeah.
Because that, he would be representative of a candidate coming in who hadn't been in the top seat, but maybe was reasonably qualified, right? So how big a, a bump?
A jump is that?
Do you want, you, you don't want to make it too big.
Right.
You know, nice.
Like on the old schedule, there'd be a step one coming in, right? What's that?
But the numbers don't say this, we have to. It's just what we are thinking about. And I guess to Angie's point, it could be one forty, if we said one fifty to one eighty, for example, or one eighty-five, if we get to that kind of candidate.
Quite the welcoming package though to often last in the bottom tier of the range you posted.
I agree with you.
You're gonna face it, you're gonna start mid-level.
Absolutely.
I mean, that's where you're. Most of this is gonna start.
And I will point out Jordan's, you know, if, if that included the car stuff, his, you know, actual salary was like one fifty-eight.
His actual salary, if you, well, I mean, so I did the math here. It, it, at one sixty-three, if you just add the data, it would be one sixty-three, seven twenty.
But the car allowance is like.
They said that was included in that number.
Right. And that's what the, that's what the increase with the COLA.
Right.
Right. And so his actual salary was like one fifty-eight, which is what this is. That's why I said.
Or would have been.
And our range doesn't include, right, what we're talking about one seventy-five, that doesn't include a cart thing, right?
It's just a starting.
Right. And so that's what I'm saying is, you know, I, I mean, I guess if you want to go up to one seventy-five, I can go along with that, but I'm not.
But we don't have that to cart them back. Just because Jordan had it, doesn't mean this. I mean, so I mean, that's just a way to.
Yeah.
If I may be wrong, that seemed like, just looking at it from a different level, it just seemed like, kind of like a way to circumvent the, the pay scale.
You can't.
Incentivize. There we go. So, I mean, but we're lumped with doing this, we would just be kind of lumping that in there and we don't need that incentive in theory anymore.
But where I, I guess I'd like to be able to offer like after a year, you know, because you never just know what you're gonna get. And so I'd rather kind of start one place and then say, oh, we're looking at a, you know, a ten percent, you know, COLA plus what? You know, based on a positive, you know. Yeah, and you will have, I'm assuming Eric, that when we provide profiles, there's also going to be in their salary requirements that the candidates is also gonna, we're gonna be made aware of. So a lot of this is a little bit like the cart in front of the horse, that as we get closer, this will be an actual uh, easier decision than it seems right now.
Yeah. So. Counsel, if, if I may, um, the, the range that you put out right now is really, you know, how do you want to attract people just to put their application in? Once you've selected a candidate, you have all sorts of bells and whistles available to you to put together a package, whether it's a car allowance or whether it's amount of vacation time or whether it's uh, something else. But that, that happens during the negotiation phase. Um, and so I, I would encourage you to just think about what is it that, what's the range that's going to get them to put the application in? And then you can worry about the bells and whistles when you get to the negotiations.
So this side of the room was at one seventy-five.
I'm actually impressed. I'm cool with a one, one fifty.
One, one fifty to one eighty. I can live with that. How about you, mayor?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Does that, does that have to start a too big a jump?
You want to keep it up.
Yeah. Let's, let's keep, let's keep it at the low end, just in case we get somebody at the, at that entry level that probably won't with, if, if we get that many candidates, but.
I mean, but one eighties are actually gonna be, you know, when you add all the other add-ons.
Yeah.
It's.
One forty to one eighty. At this point, it's all just bait, just to get somebody to jump at that hook, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is, this is not a commitment. This is just for advertising purposes, one forty to one eighty.
I mean, if they're up at that, I mean, they need.
Eric, you good with that?
Absolutely. So I, I just want to, I just want to confirm what I think I just heard. So you want one forty to one eighty?
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. That's, that's a, that is a good range. Um, I will tell you that I'm already getting phone calls. In interest of this position. So uh, I, I think uh, we're headed in the right direction.
Well, then let's move it down to one twenty.
We just gave away a.
I'm not.
No.
The negotiations will be later.
No, but this is the mayor anyway, so.
Are we?
We have everything we need to be able to move forward, so.
Okay, mayor, I think that's everything. If you have any closing remarks.
No, just thank you, everybody. Uh, really exciting. Um, I think obviously we're all on the same page and thank you for your presentation. Uh, really appreciate the work done so far.
Thank you.
Alright, I'll go ahead and close the work session. Thank you, everybody.